Educating, Informing, Serving. TV Keeping Government Honest.
Evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's Tuesday, November 26, 6:00 PM. We're on the third floor for regular subfloor meeting for budget-only articles. So I think we're only doing your agenda tonight. We're going to play with budget. While call meeting in order, any additions to the agenda for routine administrative matters and oppressive matters that will require ratification or future meeting?
For having none.
No. Anybody else? Hearing none? Good on public comment. Doesn't look like anybody's here. Let me skip that and go right into the agenda. Part of budget review, we're just going to do the highway. On the fold out is page 14. And back here, book is Article Number 10.
Yeah, so if you want me to explain, hopefully the books have been helpful. This spreadsheet is of the entire town budget at the beginning. It's been updated since your last conversation, your last meetings. And then within each department section, there's another spreadsheet that's a subset of this, but they're the same numbers, just so you have them handy. And then you have the numbers to date in the current fiscal year. And then for departments where there's contracts that we thought were irrelevant, you have the contracts. So, and then if I can talk to you a little bit about the schedule, we can go through January, the middle of January to the budget review, and then we'll still have plenty of time to put the books together. If you want to talk about the other parts of the book, like the social service agencies, that's in here now, normally you don't get that till later, is it normally? Or not normally, last year we were scrambling, so hopefully we'll be less scrambling this year and we can get stuff when needed.
Okay.
Okay? Yeah.
Currently, we're at seven and a half cents on budget increase this year with the totals that we've got in front of us, two cents of which we can't do much about, but was welded at town meeting for the fire truck purchase. So, that being said, we know the job ahead of us. So, anybody got any ideas on revenue? We can start with page 14, that's sort of the...
I have one here.
That's the page 13, this is the... 14 is the schedule for revenue.
Did we get a response to Stefan's email question?
Some of them.
Would be helpful with...
Yeah, we have some of them. Yeah, can I just address the revenue question a little bit? I'd still like to talk more about the stormwater utility as a revenue. The two fire trucks, when we looked at the debt schedule, they're quite a bit of an increase in... That's two cents. And we can actually refinance those move a year, so we can make a dent in next year's budget. And then there's also the VFDA assessment that we can look at. So there are other sources of revenue that I think we should look at.
So up to 7.5% for we did touch. Don't you get something?
Sorry?
Well, the fire trucks we didn't touch, plus the...
What we can do is, we... The, you know, Selah, or you probably do, how to finance anything beyond five years, we need a full vote of the town. We could do that. But what would be simpler would be to refinance for five years, starting next year as year one, instead of this year as year one. And we can do that through an article on the warning. So that's, that way we can spread it out essentially six years is what we get. And we can also structure it so that it's more of a balloon payment at the end.
Yeah, so the two cents that Peter indicated we really couldn't touch, we have been researching and consulted with BLCT, and we can, in fact, refinance the fire trucks again for a five-year period and have the first payment smaller and balloon at the end when our debt schedule starts to reduce. So we're, we will be bringing those refinancing options to the group.
And it would have to be approved by town meeting.
By town meeting.
Can we look at the balloon payment thing where we're going to work for five years and then have a fifth year as a balloon, and then when that, when you showed up, if we refinance that balloon for another five years, that would stretch out to 10? I don't know if we can do that.
So I don't think we can do that with the fire truck, but we can do that with other payments?
Well, we might be able to, because their life isn't that long. But we'll, we'll check that out, sure.
I mean, you know, we'll do it one year.
And you might as well have options.
We'll do it for one year, and then we're going to do the five years afterward. We're really not going to be saving that much if we could, you know, forget it down.
Well, we will save for the, save significantly for this fiscal year that we're budgeting and then the year after that. Then our debt schedule, we have debts that are dropping off, so there's room to actually pay the balloon payment.
Yeah, 2023, it almost goes in half, not quite in half.
Yeah.
Exactly.
And we don't want to necessarily do that because, you know, we might kind of budget for our debt.
Yeah. Yeah, 2021 is the peak now by a lot. So we want to even out those peaks.
We were just addressing the two cents to say we actually had used them even about that two cents where we thought there was no...
Okay, so do you want the answers to the questions, or do you want to do it?
I didn't, I, what was this email? I don't, never seen one.
You get the email from something?
Yeah. When was it?
Didn't have the thing in mind. I'm going to figure out.
I know I asked them. I don't know if my question was a dollar.
It was questions about, like, the number of grants, the amount of grants from Gary, projects, from public works.
On the app, granting up from Gary.
So I do have the, if you want to do the grants information.
What the, you know, what the total was, what the cost was, you know, including benefits and stuff.
This is the grant information. We'll have to just, we have several bits of information on the, on public works. I think you wanted the projects again, so...
Want me to read it?
I'm sorry?
Want me to read it?
Read what?
The email.
Well, no, just answer the questions one by one.
Okay, well, we're leaving some stuff out, so see if we get the...
Yeah, we don't have everything, because we just got it this afternoon, and there was a lot of other things happening. But, but we will, we can get that information, and it's not difficult to get. Oh, okay. Outside engineering, I don't think we have to spend anything on outside engineering. If you get a chance, maybe that. Okay, public works director, last year there was discussion on the public works director costs and development director costs, full-time, part-time. Tell me the impact of this three on the budget from a tax rate standpoint of view. So every $60,000 is a cent roughly. So as far as the development, why don't we do the development director first, and then public works? Sure.
So the development director, the increase from part-time to full-time would be approximately seventy, you know, three quarters of a penny. However, him moving to a full-time status would bring in more revenue than the cost. So in addition to the revenue, it wouldn't just generate more revenue, we would also get a lot more for services in addition to the revenue, but we would also be able to bill for part of my salary and benefits as well, because the more administration, he, grant administration he can do, the more that I'm able to do. So essentially, it's a watch. If you want to talk dollar amount...
Those 30, 35?
Yeah, the impact to move to full-time with benefits is roughly $30,000. However, we would see far more than that in revenue. So the impact to the taxpayers, there wouldn't be one. And in fact, it might really be some, a small amount of tax burden.
And that's not just because of grants, but it's, it's more because of administrative costs, which are already covered. And that's not a, a maybe. The administrative costs are for sure. So then the grants question is what I handed out to you?
Do we have a number on the, on the administrative cost of being reimbursed?
We do in the development section of the budget.
What does "for the match hundreds of thousands" mean?
What match?
That's a difference on this thing, which I'll...
Yeah, we'll look at that. Doesn't make a lot of sense.
So in the development budget...
Number nine.
I thought it was 15.
We have, yeah, there's, we're estimating 15,000 in grant administration revenue, and that would be based on Gary part-time. So we could adjust that if he were to be full-time.
And we actually might even have trouble getting it if he's part-time, just because of the constraints on this one. And there's particular grants in the pipeline for next fiscal year?
Well, part of this is, the administration, a lot of it is pass-through grants.
Right.
So it's not grants that we would apply for and maybe get, and that's why it's not, it's not questionable. This is grant administration that has to be done, and we receive the funds, the grants distributed to us, and then it just passes through, and we distribute the money for these grants, so CROMA, the Robertson Paper Mill, things like that. So this, this isn't questionable, like grants you apply to and you may or may not get. This is grants that we administer.
And then there are old grants, like Howard Block, that we do not get reimbursed for, but we have to manage. So that, that takes a good chunk of Gary's time, it takes my time. So that's something just we need him to be here to do. We have obligations going back 30 years that we still have to fill out paperwork for. And if we don't, consequences are dire.
Okay, you got some questions on that sheet?
Yeah, so this...
Is there, did we get a, besides Gary, did, did public works, do we get, where are the grants?
No, we don't have that, and we want to, at least I don't think so. Yeah. Whether we can get it, and we also need to give you a list of RFPs, because that was, if you're talking value of the position, RFPs are as much of a value as grants. But did you want to talk about the development grants?
Yeah, I, the match hundreds of thousands, what does that mean?
Yeah, that means, that's not just town money, obviously, because there wasn't really much town money in it, that's other agencies, EPA. There were literally hundreds of thousands of dollars that other agencies put into that project. These, some of these overlap, the Robertson Paper Mill, it's a super complicated mix of grants. And what Gary did, he just put this together this evening. You can see where he has grant application, and then administration program management. The key shows what he's doing. So with these Robertson Paper Mill ones, the RPM ones, it's a lot of administration and project or program management. So on the first page, it's really just Robertson Paper Mill. And then second page are some grants that we did not get. And this has been a good learning experience, because when we don't have much of a match, or even no match, or if the match is in kind, we're really at a disadvantage, because the granting agencies want to see that we are skin in the game and that we're, we're putting something into it. So the ones we didn't get were low amount ones. Just found out today that we didn't get the Window, it's not Window Regional, oh, Window Regional Commission is the match. And again, the match wasn't from the town. That was the one season that we went to for the meeting earlier this month.
Oh, right.
For the...
Oh, yeah, we didn't get that.
For, it wasn't Robertson Paper Mill, it was...
TLR.
TLR, yes. And what happened, what happened there, first of all, if we don't get it one year as our first year applying, Nathan Cleveland said, "Don't give up." One of the agencies that got funded this time was our fourth time. But we, and our issue was local support. And what we showed as local support was that a couple of years ago at a town meeting, there was a motion to tear it down, and that was defeated, which was some support locally, but what would have made a bigger impression would have been if the town had said, "We're willing to put $100,000 into saving these buildings," rather than just saying, "No, we don't want them to be torn down." Because that's other communities that are applying for grants are actually putting money in as a match. So, so we need, not now, obviously, but at some point, need to make a decision on whether or not you do want to go forward with that project. Because if there isn't support, then it doesn't make sense to, to spend time going through the application process, because it is pretty complicated process.
How long did they work on the grants for Robertson Paper Mill?
Different people have been working for years.
So we're kind of, we've been working on it for years, but we got it this year. So I, is, I guess, is there, and we had a similar discussion when discussing this position last year about we would get more than we would spend if we funded this position? So do we have a comparison as to what we received in comparison to funding this position? Like you've said it again, that we'll get more if we go the full time.
To supplement the difference between the full-time and the part-time.
Or even...
Well, the position's not 100% paying for itself. What we're saying is the amount to take it from part-time to full-time, that full amount for the hours and the benefits will be covered by additional revenues that are brought in from his time. Not the whole, the whole position as a whole is not paying for itself, just the, if we bring him in full-time, he will bring in enough revenue to cover that and more.
But the value of the position is, is long-term as well as short-term too, because he's setting the, the stage for redevelopment, and it's, it's a lot of work. I mean, there's, there's a lot to it. I mean, the VFADC supports that. There could actually be funding maybe, if we could find VFADC money from other agencies to, to support it, but it really needs to be full-time. There's, there's a lot to do still. Well, you also need to think more than just one grant, one month, one year. I mean, if you're full-time position, if there's stability in a position, you can start making plans for the future. Exactly. And long-term. And we do have a good strategy, we're working with Isaac Wagner, and so we have a multi-year strategy on all of these grants, because there's certain, like the one that we just applied to and didn't get, we, now we need to decide, do we go for that one again, or do we maybe go to the train station? Because the train station was the next one on our, on our list, and I think that really is going to be a policy decision, because it's going to depend on local support. I mean, what do the people care more about? The TLR buildings or the train station? It might be that kind of choice.
But lots of decisions for grants are based on stability. We saw that with the bond to bank alone, you know, having stability and long-term, and people and plans in place, our chances are less, less to get these development grants if we don't have a full-time person. That does play into the equation of the decision maker.
How much cooperation we get from BDCC? They're regional. I mean, you, you look at what's going on in Springfield, and they're using their regional development department as, as the key to get most of their money.
Yeah, they're, they're supportive. I'm on the SEVES board now, basically they're the group to the SEVES.
But most of the people on BDCC are often proud to use anybody from up here on that board. So we really don't have a voice, and we can really guess agrees sort of thing.
They want us to be more involved. I mean, that was, that was what they were telling me to get me on the SEVES.
Truth be known, but BDCC did the local work getting those grants.
Right, right.
It wasn't, it wasn't Gary's. I'm not trying to knock Gary, but I mean, BD, if it wasn't the BDCC, that and CROMA would never, never materialize.
Right, well, Gary wasn't here then, but they handed off the...
Administration.
The administration of it to us, which is good, because we have Shannon to help. Gary couldn't have done that on his own.
Right, yeah.
But also Shannon can do it, no, Gary. I mean, it really...
It's a team.
Yeah. Yeah.
You got the other one? You want to feed up on that one?
I guess I don't understand the answer to hundreds of thousands.
Well, I think that goes back to the...
I'm trying to get a comparison, I think, and it's not clear in this...
We can make it more clear.
Spreadsheet.
We can make it more clear.
Or not really do the development anyway, but...
You basically want to cause management analysis of the position. But I mean, you can't make comparison, because I mean, you're talking about future grants as well. You're talking about, we don't know yet what your grants...
Well, we were told during discussion that we would receive these things, and so I'm looking at moving forward with funding it again, what we received.
I think one of...
In support of the position, what did we receive?
I think one of the things we're looking, or you're trying to do is say, "It costs us this much this year, and how much should we receive this year?" But the work that's done in a fiscal year, we're, we don't necessarily, we're not handed the value of that immediately. These things are projects or grants that take place over time. And so we could give you, you know, say, a plan for this grant, and this is the administration, and this is what would happen over a three-year period or something like that, but not all of it is an immediate, hardly any of it will take place in the same fiscal year as you expect.
Right, but we also received many without that position.
Many grants? Yeah, but not, not that many. I mean, BDCC helped before.
Correct.
Yeah, I can tell you, we will, it will not be, it is not financially beneficial to not have that position. We're better off financially, but we'll, we'll get you more information. This, and we, this, we weren't going to do this tonight anyway, so that wasn't the plan. But we can get you more information.
Okay, got a question on page 14. How come we got two classifications for a class two paving grant? We got one at 1010, 1022, and one at 86. And on the 86 line, it says, "Not anticipated." On the 22 line, we've got 100 and, 25,000, 157, almost 157.7 in 2019. So can somebody find what the difference is between those two, or?
So the one that says FY '21, not anticipated, that's, I get to the bottom, right?
I think that's the...
Yeah.
I think that's the square.
Paving, paving, not anticipated. Okay, then you go up here to this one, where we got 157,000 dollars. You've got a little account here. There's another one that says paving grant.
Plus two paving grant.
Yeah, right there. So, which is in between the two, and they've got things in the count number. We got money in one, it's out in the other, I mean, doesn't make much sense to me. I assume we're going to apply for it, it does say we're not going to get anything until '23 or something, not closely.
So I'd like to add to that. The square was applied for, first of, before all of us were here, that was applied for downtown paving, 175,000 budget FY '18, you see the actual zero. We did not get the full 175, because there was only so much as football, the downtown was business street, but we couldn't stretch it beyond that, we could not stretch it up on '21 or '22.
That's what we could reimburse them for.
Right, we were able to get 157.689, that was an actual. It should have been on one line, I think, so...
I can merge those lines.
If we can merge them.
The chart of accounts here is just horrific. There's multiple lines for multiple things. That's supposed to be one line.
So thank you for saying that.
The both say the same thing, only got two different ending numbers on them.
So, so I will move the 157.689 down to where you see the 175.
Yeah, well, it's just confusion to have both places. When you got one that says you got 100, then 157, then the other ones have not anticipated, so why aren't they on the same line, I guess?
Okay, is it there?
Yeah, good cut. Look at the counts. So they'll go into the 86 one, yeah. Okay, good. All right, so we're going to do higher.
Anybody else on, on revenue?
Oh, I just have a little thing on revenue. What we charge for the highway per, the road permit is not enough, that.
We're getting to that. I was, that's on my list.
Okay.
I threw that again today. Yeah, right now, I guess I'd charge...
$100.
$100 for the permit, I guess.
The highway access permit, too?
Yeah. And the driver, I think there's a work on the right-of-way permit.
Yeah.
And then when, when the work's complete, we give the money back.
Yes.
To me, I think, here we do it, it's kind of...
Judicative.
Why are we giving it back?
Yeah, maybe for a residential person, you know, with a little driveway or something, but for someone who's going to cut something in the square, we need to have a deposit, and it needs to cover our costs, and it needs to be some serious amount.
You're not going to, you're not going to make millions off it, but I think it's a...
But it should cover our costs, and we should have a deposit.
You got highway access permit, which I assume are driveway permits? So what, we are charging like 25 bucks for that one or something?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, at least it covers the, the time, because you have to, I mean, involve your time and Mike's time.
He and Mike both go out there.
And Chuck sometimes, depending where it is. Oh, yeah, there's some. And, and sometimes water, I mean, utilities. And that's a fee we can set, there's no...
Yeah, we can set it, yeah. And it's like, maybe we should, we should start thinking about that, because it's, it's not a big source of revenue, but it depends if you have 50 people lined up, yeah, you can make some money, but if you only got one or two, but still, why, you know, it doesn't make sense to give back to them. I mean, the air access, and if something happens later on, they're not going to fix it, we have to go out and fix the problem, so...
Right.
I think we ought to anticipate going up the electric expense and the cost of the town to deal with that.
Yep, we'll get all of them.
Yeah.
So you guys want to come up some numbers? You want us to come up some numbers?
What, for the fees?
Yeah.
We can do it.
Just, just make something like that, I don't know.
And if you want to, yeah.
What do you think? I mean, like, I don't know, 500 bucks is a little bit over, overextending.
I think it should depend on the scope of work.
Yeah.
I mean, depending on, depending on the, on the case, I would assume, I mean, like a commercial...
And the location, like something in the square, yeah.
You know, where...
Yeah, like how much traffic is going to be disturbed, length of time, I mean, we can come up with certain criteria.
I think we need to review nonreplicable portion, and then plus something else, depending on what it is, where it is, pretty much there, X rating.
Okay. All right, there's another one on revenue, but we'll get into that in executive section, and it'll be an exhaustive, quick executive section today for discussion on, on the bottom section, on an insurance contract. Okay, now we get to the bumper expenses. Contracting services on page 15, you got $17,000 increase there. They're surveying, what are we surveying, I guess? 15,000.
Yeah, that's, that's not an increase, it's carried over from last year. So basically, this is the one RFP I had not had a chance to write, just getting started on, a lot of what the right-of-ways are around town, there's so many unknowns, even Burt Lake and Park, the right-of-way stuff should have happened a year ago, never did. A lot of stuff. High Hill, we do High Hill in Brooklyn next year, we ought to know what the right-of-ways are going into. Every project prior to, we should know what they are, but at some point, while we still have a fairly young surveyor here, would like that be able to hand over some type of right-of-way maps to a future generation, so that they're not always second-guessing, or they can actually meet someone in the field, let them know what we have, what we can do, and what they can't, what they can do. Because this is a hit of medicine, it's not a simple three-rod right-of-way thing.
I know, there's a lot of them out there, because when we're doing the fire building out there, there's no consensus on them, but...
And the only one I know we... And the only one I know that we actually own is on our right-of-way, Grizzle Drive. The rest are anywhere from two rides, unknown, if it's unknown, it's three rides. But then some of that drought and dirt roads, if it's been known to be in our past, based on stone walls, it's not a simple in the middle of the road. There is a lot of input that's really needed on this and that. So that is the one RFP that's, hopefully get out soon, to start the process from this year budget. And like to continue and carry it on the next few years, you know, it's gonna need a multi-year attempt.
Well, how much could we give them left, this left?
Like I said, I haven't had a chance. All the RFPs, I haven't put that one out yet.
Right, but I thought we talked about that, where that was an important thing we'd like to accomplish before people move on.
Right, no, it isn't.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, don't get me wrong, you just, we've had a bunch of other things going on, and it hasn't been the... We've had projects to get down to construction blocks first.
Right.
This is the one in the winter, so now's the time to put this one out.
Okay, how about outside services road? You got, in the description column, you got three items there that add up to thirty-five thousand, that we're projecting seventy. I know, looking back, the lack of point nineteen was sixty-eight, seven.
Yeah. Okay, so that's... So that's a one-one-two, twelve fifty-nine, one hundred fifty-six. That's missing some description items there. I think Shannon's got it on the computer now, but they're not on here later to print out. So the catch basin line, drainage twenty grand, drain line, TV work. Should be ten grand, tree work, ten grand, snow removal, twenty grand. Fog lines, ten thousand, crack filling, ten thousand. So I took eighty thousand, but my recommendation, that's the one line item I'd like to see bumped up. We need to actually do more on televising, televising drain lines, which we haven't been doing enough. So that way, we can pick up on things like high water drainage, the more TV work we do. Now, there's a substantial amount of infrastructure here that we're not televising. You know, there could be some issues going on, too. With pipes, I don't know about. And televising is the only way you can know, is to get in there, so you got... And especially try to know years ahead of a project. So if you can be one or two years ahead of a project, you know, there's something else you haven't, that you need to address in there.
What was the last one after fog lines, sorry?
Fog line, ten thousand, and crack filling, ten thousand. So my recommendation is to go from seventy to eighty. And some of this, the reason it dropped down from a hundred thousand, that is because we're expecting the backdoor project. That never happened.
Now, the next, next one down, you've got bridges here, outside services, bridges, head wall work. You're estimating fifteen grand, or fifteen, you got fifteen thousand?
Yeah.
What are we doing?
That's a rule, we did not get the grant last year, so it's Route one-twenty-one head wall, not the...
Okay, yeah, well, that's why when it says bridges, that's why I, that's more of a color.
Yeah, it's a good sign, yeah.
So what do we wanna do with depot street bridge? We've gotta start figuring somebody, what do we, what do we, is that one at a hundred and ten thousand or something?
Yeah, it is a little bit more. I put it, I was looking at it on the debt schedule, yeah.
Because we got to involve that.
Right, exactly, that's where we're starting.
When's that, twenty-twenty-three, that's coming up?
Yeah, for twenty-twenty-four, our year, twenty-twenty-four.
Oh, okay, twenty-twenty-four, okay.
So we were just talking about maybe saving half of it, and then financing the other half.
Yeah.
Just 'cause probably trying to save all of it at this point is not gonna be possible.
Yeah, that's what I was saying, I don't remember what the number was on, okay.
Yeah, it's three hundred and twenty thousand. I, the way I've been keeping track of that is on the debt schedule, trying to, trying to figure out a reasonable projection, so... Maybe we can go to that at some point. At some point, I'd like to talk about this, the debt schedules some more.
We got that.
Okay.
Back in that one...
But yeah, that's where we're looking at the depot street.
One of the things, Wayne and I talked about earlier, was it started with something, where if you start with, say, twenty this year, so give you twenty this year, up by ten next year, go twenty, thirty, forty, fifty, that'll give you one forty by the time they build the bridge, we'll have, that's be roughly half. So it's, or you can go ten, twenty, thirty, forty, just somewhere to start. Starting on twenty might be kind of a better number, because you'll, it'll be just about halfway there.
Right, but right now, we just have one.
Yeah, one.
Do you wanna just roll this into the budget, or do we go and put an article on the town warning card?
We have, we should have something in the budget, just so we start, because there's going, they haven't gotten us the schedule yet, but there's gonna be some sort of preliminary engineering, too, that they'll likely need us to chip in for. So probably, somewhere between, either ten or twenty, I think would make sense here.
Yeah.
Do you wanna have a placeholder in the...
I put ten as a placeholder.
What'd you say?
Ten for a placeholder?
Yeah, I'm gonna start with ten, I thought maybe twenty.
Well, twenty would be good, too, but I mean, what happens if we have a high...
We're two cents in the increase in the highway budget right now, so we gotta watch where we're going here.
It's just that next year, our debt schedule goes lower.
We need to go the other direction.
It's ten, oh.
Right, but we know we're gonna have to pay.
I do, okay.
Well, we'll get...
I thought you just need to be going on some...
Well, I was wondering if you... Speak up, all you have to do is speak up.
Oh.
I mean, just going through my notes, but that's gonna be, you guys can't throw anything on the table.
Yeah, I'm gonna go Peters, and then we'll...
If we're on page fifteen. You got side contract, up down on sidewalks here, sidewalk replacement, that fifty, fifty thousand out there. Six thousand, I remember, was when we did the sidewalks, and that was just the cost of concrete, the labor, the stuff through the town.
That's correct.
I'm correct.
Yeah.
So what are we planning on doing? We haven't done anything besides, just curious where...
We already had that funded.
Yeah, this year we'll do some extra, in the spring.
And up there, so...
Yeah.
Okay, you have questions?
I don't have any questions, though.
Well, comments?
Nope.
Okay. Wait, so you wanna leave that fifty there, because that was...
We can leave it there as a placeholder, I think, and decide what we want to do anything with it, if we have to get to a cut.
And, and we do have the sidewalk cost comparisons for you.
Yeah.
That we can talk about, you got, I think, last time.
We have no idea what sidewalks we'd be looking at.
Well, looking at the section front of Canal House, you know, I'm talking major, it's a hundred fifty feet, maybe, and over there by seven-eleven, those two in particular. And then just a few hours around town, I, you know, one of these days we'll get through the budget and go, start this map.
Can we get a, can we get a list of them, so we gotta get some idea what, and estimate what the cost of the tunnels?
Yeah.
In case we get to a point where maybe we wanna do one and not the other, or whatever, or two.
Right.
Then you have to line it up, schedule with Canal House owners?
And I've already talked to them, and we were ready to do that this year. And, and I talked to them, I said, well, if we're gonna do our sidewalk, we're gonna do our sidewalk with the proper pitch, quarter of a foot, which means it's gonna drop the back edge down, and we don't wanna be steep, you know, making that steeper over a distance of one foot or two feet. So they've got some issues that they need to work out internally. I don't mind working with them with the town, because we're changing it, but I don't wanna have to, I don't wanna go all the way to the building to make it right. So I think it's, we're trying to work with them, so that maybe it's a, we're with a contract, maybe we help them relate some break with one of their guys, or a contract service guy working with us, because we are changing it, but... But it's probably close to a half inch per foot right now, it's, it's quite a bit of steep, you know, sharp pitch, and the ADA calls out a quarter of a foot, two percent ready. So there are some issues, but they're not all of our issues, it's trying to work together with them.
So we'll work on that in the spring, right? Is that still planned?
Well, it's still in there, it's actually...
But they have to do it, but we can work on it in the spring if they're ready to.
Exactly.
Right, okay.
Spring, at this point, I don't have some money in that budget, so it'd be July.
Okay.
Doing the other area, I can see there's any larger increases on this, on fifteen, it's a paving convenience. I know we talked about that for a couple of years here, going to four hundred thousand this year. Fifty thousand dollars depending, but... And that doesn't include Pleasant Valley Road, from what the notes say there.
That's correct, yeah. And you should have, do you all get this?
Yeah, what we're gonna, yeah, we've got that. What we're gonna do on Pleasant Valley Road, if we get to that point, finish it, or?
Not this year.
No, I wish.
We could, I mean, right now, Pleasant Valley is coming up in about two, three years. My recommendation at this point, if there's something that really means that we could, drag some couple spots, see how those, and see if we can buy that time for that two, three years, before we've got quite money to do it, so we're not, you know, putting in...
That's what we talked about last year, doing that work to get us to, we do total reconstruction.
Right, well, last year, we did talk about maybe two-year plan, do half next, half this year and half next year.
But we went a little further this year.
No, we did, still did half, we did it.
We did more than we had originally anticipated. We, we increased the funding to go, well, we talked about that whole purpose of not fixing something that we're under total reconstruction, trying to get by. Um, so do you have a plan for, for that added fifty thousand for that? Like, if we don't have a...
Oh, yeah, we have the RSMS, can you go ahead?
He's got that, yeah.
Should we all, like, make extra copies of this? Catalocking the paving calculations for summer twenty-one, if you want more copies, you know, do you all have that?
Yeah, we got it, it has a change.
Well, what's on there that you could cut fifty thousand from?
Well, anything we cut, because as it is now, we cut Darby Hill last year, that's still off the list. If we were to cut something here, you know, we're basically shuffling all of our SMS, we're kicking everything out. So not what we're trying to preserve. Not saying, but to answer your question.
You have four hundred thousand dollars worth of work on that sheet you're looking at?
Right, four hundred thousand, you have on that sheet?
Four hundred and forty-five thousand.
Well, four forty, what, the four forty-five was, the X to forty-nine, four ninety-four, where bids came in, we were trying to get a couple shims done. Those are kind of hopeful items, items that are in the RSMS, but could use some work.
What was the, sorry, go ahead.
We got the RSMS calls out four hundred and ten thousand dollars, this is actually at four hundred thousand. I had to take it.
What's the grizzle drive portion? Like, I think that was part of Stefan's question as well. What, what's grizzle drive eighty-three, is that?
That's an inch of board overlay, followed by chip seal. The last time...
When is it scheduled to be?
Oh, it's laying out there, Pat, laying out twenty thirty. Will you rebuild? It's a long ways. You got one-twenty-one, between Saxon and Balls Falls first, you got Pleasant Valley Road, so you're probably talking twenty forty, twenty fifty.
Yeah, that's on this, this sheet is in section four, which is the capital planning, grizzle drives at the bottom of it. And so far out, it's not even, it's like twenty thirty-four, or...
Well, or beyond.
Or beyond, yeah.
So we weren't, we did talk last year...
Reconstruction, I think.
Right, but we also talked about just doing the chip seal, trying to buy maybe ten more years or something?
Yeah, the only way, the chip seal is by itself, is not, is unconditioned enough, you do not want this chip seal. We bought eighteen years, last time we did it, it was two thousand and two, we actually chipped, we actually shimmed it, they're one-inch old, right? I mean, it's an border, heavy inch, followed by chip seal, we bought eighteen years out of it. At that point, we told people we'd get ten or twelve, so we bought a lot more time out of than we anticipated. So I think you could actually probably buy another potential eighteen years, get us out beyond twenty thirty-four. Because Pleasant Valley Road and one-twenty-one, there's some, you're talking over ten million dollars between those two. That's some major dollars.
Between Bridge Street and...
Pleasant Valley Road and one-twenty-one, between Balls Falls and Saxon River, so you're talking some... There's still some gravel stuff, like I mentioned, RSMS, where we might go mine, talk to the stream alteration, and mines on the gravel from the road that's still sitting there, if we find a place to mine it close by, process it, use that as a base gravel, followed by the dense grade on top. You know, it'd be a nice, clean, washed gravel. But that'll save you, you don't tell money there. And maybe by the time one-twenty-one, one-twenty-one's done, I doubt it's gonna happen now, but you'll notice Saxon River once they're considered, sewer lane through there, or water lane.
You're, looking at your paving sheet that you just, little streets on it. You're looking at a Broadway and Millsworth shimmin' some up there?
Yeah, the fire blast, nine-tenths of a mile, we could use some shimmin' before we chip seal it.
Okay, but you got eighty-seven thousand dollars worth of chip sealing going on here.
Right, and that's the chip seal, your major reserve that road.
Nine-tenths of a mile?
No, no, that eight, that's actually four, almost two miles, ninety-eight hundred feet. So if you look at the first one, the shim, that's for forty-seven hundred fifty feet.
Yeah.
Okay, I just got it roughed in a half inch on the average. That's three hundred thirty tons, three thirty-one.
When was the rest of it done? How many years ago?
Uh...
Three or four, the shim?
Six, seven, eight, probably.
Shim and chip seal.
No, no, we just did, there was no shim and chip sealing, it was reconstructed in eleven, twelve, thirteen.
Because we, I was gonna say, because we still got the bond going on.
It's still paying, it has like three, four years ago.
Somebody's close to seventy, eight years now. How's the condition of that, almost two mile stretch, part of the digging now?
We could use a chip seal right now. Preserve it now, you'll get to a point, you could maybe not touch it for another twelve years, twelve or fifteen years.
Yeah, two thousand and eleven, it looks like.
And that was the plan all along, is to preserve, you know, once another, preserve it. And, and that's what they're teaching, there's been different seminars, ladies and gentlemen, they say, wait. Paving is now all about preservation. Still got just some reconstruction, but you've got to preserve what you got, it's key.
Yeah.
What about Ashes Hollow Road? Why, I have a question, why is that paved to begin with, that hill? Do we know why?
Because the hill, the hill, it washed out all the time, it was washed out, so they paved the, Broadway, the hill.
Big bad hill.
And then they did, they put a ditch on it, sorry, but that was causing a problem with the...
I know, it's full of leaves right now.
Yeah.
The color is full of leaves, but I just, all right, I don't see that.
That's all I can tell you.
One is a paved, do we know, probably did that?
Ninety-six, isn't it? It's been, been a long time. It might have had a shim, partial shim after that at some point.
Right, oh, yeah.
Because it was, it was that, might have been ninety-seven, eight, it was after grafted, washed out, applied for mitigation, correct, did that project, and back in ninety-six.
Yeah, the bottom, the only thing that's paved is the hill, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, because you got the blast, and then it goes up the hill. And that hill is pretty steep, it's like one or two...
What are you saying, two trucks out there, when it snowed, one was sold, one was painted?
I don't definitely, I think it's just up on that area anyway, I'm not sure of it, too.
Here we go.
So to answer your question, I don't know which one I'd have to pick if we were to cut, I'd have to think about that one. I guess Kingsport and, actually, all of them, but it'd be nice to get at least one of them on. Probably Ashes Hollow Road, I do a whole lot of Kingsport Road. That's forty-three, four-one. I'm just trying to keep them together, the more we try to keep things together, the more it does pay off by the contractor, and it all lies that much. So I put, I would put Kingsport Road South, like, number fifteen, as the lowest priority. Keep in mind, with the RSMS, it will affect, every, we're trying to build that above, about seventy hours out. And every year from here on out, we're not gonna be very perfectly...
Yeah, because we're gonna be five, fifty thousand less this year and next year.
Yeah, I gotta steal from some, I gotta steal from another road next year, like, now I'm stealing from Darby Hill. I'll steal from that again next year, I'm stealing from Ashes Hollow Road, so it is progressive.
So we're trying to get to a steady five hundred thousand, that was the plan?
Right.
And then you probably keep it at that.
Well, it's five hundred thousand, then they could pay off the, 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 and then roll that in to, to projects.
Now, Sanders Creek. I don't know if you've been watching, but I know, I visit some of my friends up there, the traffic on that's ridiculous. And that's getting beat up pretty bad, can we...
I'm sure it's horrible. Sanders Creek is horrible.
Well, I know, as you said, if we trade one of those with something else, that may take a better... I mean, I went down on Bark Street, looking at another situation down there, and that one's not in any great shape, so either. Especially when you get around the corner on the flats, like...
Right, well, it's horrible down there. The Bark Street area, that's thorough in here, not too many years to be, to be disheartened. So we'd like to paint in the near Sanders Creek, I think that's in there eventually. That's why we... That's why I've got it in there, which is allowed, when we've got, yeah, maybe a whole lot, Honda Road section, it's a section around water for sharp water.
Yeah, I just wondered if there's a lesser traveled road that would, we could switch out with that one? Or maybe not chip seal, or, and chip seal is something that, that do Center Street.
Randall Hill is one, we could probably drag the push box up through and take her out. And that's like a bottom four, they're not even on the list really, for part of four hundred. Uh, Center Street? Yeah, we'd be nice to.
If you're on thirteen, roughly thirteen thousand, you've shimmed that one, Center Street.
Right.
And everybody uses the Cut Slope Street now, so.
And the pavement's pretty thin, the guy who said they dug there in the past, it's a couple inches, maybe an inch. Not sure how it's gonna go together right now, but.
While we're talking about roads, can we talk about this? This sheet, a little bit? It's, um, the last thing in section four, the front section four. Um, and this is what I had hoped to have an updated version by tonight, but I don't. Um, but we'll have an updated version soon, but we need to. Um, add Depost Street to this, so the top part of this, total paving and gravel budget. Though, that's the numbers that we were just talking about, right? Ever, four nineteen.
Right, the, uh, the four ten, the budget for all paving projects, it was, you see the under twenty twenty one, you see the four ten, we're actually at four hundred. That was actually my wall when I put the budget together, I put four hundred in there, I remember the fifty every year. So, so next to ten, we could put fourteen to, uh, Center Street.
Right, but, but just, and, and before we get to that, the, um, notice how much it jumps from twenty two to twenty three, I don't know if that was with the bond?
No, with the bond, it's, that's actually.
With the bond expiring?
Yeah, that's it, that's the bond expiring and then the, uh, last two grand. That'll be due by then.
Oh, okay.
Pay the grant.
Okay.
Something like that.
Assuming that product, that program's still.
And that's where we would do, I guess now, now's the time, there's different options now, now that Burt Blake Park is done.
Well, yeah, I wanna talk about that a little bit.
Go ahead.
Um, okay, so we need to add in Depost, or, uh, the bridge, cause that will be a capital project. Um, C on the proposed, um, capital projects, the fifth one down is Burt Blake Park. That was the cost, um, in the year this was done, which is two years ago, right? Was projected to be, oh, you're enough, okay, four hundred thirty thousand. Um, we actually got that done for less than three hundred thousand, because we did it with the utilities. So this just shows the value of coordinating the public works schedule with the utilities. Because obviously they had to pay to put the, um, the pavement back. And so, um, because Everett was, was here and the position exists, we were able to do this. If, if he hadn't been here or someone in that position, we wouldn't have been able to, to coordinate, because there was, it was a lot of work. To, 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 to put together that portion of the Burt Blake, um, uh, project, uh, to keep tabs on it. And it was also changing in the middle of the project, we had to, we thought we needed retaining wall at the hill that's at the top of Burke Street. We ended up being able to do it with basically a high curb. Uh, and there were some other on, um, uh, Blake Street. We managed to do, um, elevations, just very exactly so that you could do a high curb instead of a, a, a retaining wall to, to save costs.
It looks like you need a retaining wall.
Well, that.
Well, one, I mean, there's two, actually, there's two parts, right?
Yeah, the first part should work by, on up at Burke.
Oh, the other one's gonna be a retaining wall?
Yeah, I don't know yet.
All right, well, we're hoping, um, so, but I guess the point is, you spent a lot of time on that. And it was valuable, because it saved us one hundred and twenty five thousand dollars, um, in cost, uh, which is huge. And I think it's a better, it's a better project too, because we did it with water and wastewater. Um, there's a lot of stormwater improvements that went with that, some of those were unplanned. Um, and it was certainly not something that the highway superintendent could have done, and I wouldn't have had time to do it or the expertise. I certainly couldn't do elevations, I'm making new project management, I can't do elevations. So I just wanted to, to point that out.
I thought Jeffrey and Henry did, all the engineering up there.
They, I had to do all of that.
I saw all the bake checks.
Yeah, yeah, they did water sewer, I had to do the complete road design, the profile, the, you know, I have profile, cross sections. The sidewalk drains, all the accesses, it was tremendous amount of work. And basically we had a diaphragm, probably five hundred brake shots, at least a deep water shot. And I had to look at every twenty five feet, try to fit things in there as best you can, to get the alignment and the vertical curvature in there, from one side to the other. So there was some aggravation, I'm trying to make it blend, and then right away it was tight. I mean, where the edge of sidewalk is, is where the edge of right away is.
Super tight, and then moving the poles, I mean, it was just, it was a lot.
Well, the poles, yeah, I did one, I really wanted, there's no room on poles, I wanted to get them on the backside. Couldn't, we could not do that, so it's wide sidewalk, put it, made the best that, that would kill it, by where we put them. They're in the curve, at the edge of curve, separate along by the Action Street, the rest, sidewalk's wider, so you can still plod through there, get plenty of access.
So then we'll have this five hundred thousand, um, less of a, of a push on the, or draw on this schedule, uh, the twenty twenty six. So we'll have a little bit more flexibility in the schedule.
So.
So actually, Depost Street, the bridge will, could pop right into that. What's, what's our three, twenty twenty four? No, but the, our match? Three twenty, three hundred twenty thousand, is what we're suggesting.
Well, get everything to, back to.
Three hundred twenty.
To Pleasant Valley Road, so if you see this seven, it's about seven hundred thousand dollars of that. Is to finish the kind of mill, shim, overlay, and chip seal, preserve us a long time.
I thought it was five percent, we're gonna, we're gonna keep.
It is, that's, that's a high number based, that's, that's if we find, exactly. Exactly, it's a hundred and forty thousand, which may not happen, we're hoping it won't happen.
So in this, in the sense, you just save that much on your pushing Blake Burke forward?
Yeah.
Why, why couldn't you, um, got that forward? Seems like you're saving right there, so if you redid this sheet, and put that one thirty that you saved into your next budget.
Yeah, totally, no.
I mean, we're, we're, we're spending, we're, we're talking about fifty thousand dollars from your. Of where to cut, so if we just save some money, it seems like we should, it would help with your schedule here.
Totally, well, we save money in the capital program, but I don't, but I haven't had a chance to, to, to do it all yet. I just wanted to tell you that there's some good news, and I was just wanting to tell you the value of doing these with water, wastewater. Cause maybe Everett, when you did this scheduling, you looked at what water and wastewater planning to do?
Well, I heard it was gonna happen, but I was never, definitely.
But it would be good to, to schedule, obviously, the town projects with water sewer projects.
Absolutely.
Water sewer, they call it negative three percent interest, which is essentially forty percent grant. Um, I don't know how long that's gonna continue, but that's, you know, free money. So, so I, I just want to point out, there's some good news.
But, so, no, so our intention was to do exactly what we're talking about, I don't know, is to rebook at this, have a new, talk different options. But back to twenty twenty three budget year, twenty twenty two calendar year, which is the Pleasant Valley Road, a lot of work is gonna happen. One way to look at it, a lot of that was gonna be, you know, like I said, like I just started saying earlier, mill, shim, overlay, chip seal, why is trying to rebuild it? That's a lot of money, start looking at reconstruction, so maybe we could move some of that money forward. Put it to move it over a million dollars in start phase, get something done there, and maybe still a little bit of shim on what we haven't done. But to start something.
You say that buys us ten or fifteen years mill, shim, overlay?
No, it should buy you ten, twelve. You know, if you did a mill, shim, overlay, chip seal, shouldn't at least get you twelve years on that road. But we've only, right now, we're going on mill and shim, on part of it.
How much of it?
And half of that.
Percent, fifty?
Yeah, fifty, might be fifty three, but we're rating that half area.
And that was about how much?
Uh, the pavement. One, let's see, oh, I have that, it's all, it was all a hundred, a hundred thousand.
It's a hundred and a quarter, you have.
One thirty, one forty?
Five thousand or something like that.
Probably a hundred and forty thousand.
With the addition we put into it, we figured a hundred grand, I think, and we added the extra money to it.
Yeah, we've got the forty thousand dollars for the grant. So you're in the one forty range. Actually, uh, this is a good time to be in the first one, huh?
Sure, yeah, you wanted to. This is.
Yeah, the quite, what, what money's going on out there is, uh, you had asked, someone had asked a question about. By us working bases on milling, you know, doing, saving money, or, you know, students taking a look at all the costs. So what, like this, put this together, just have to mill. So we hired basins by, we, we put in twenty thousand dollars in the budget to work the basins by the alley. Uh, on their machine, they just bought a hatch on new machine, it's a seven foot milling machine. So, uh, they're forty bucks an hour, which is, they gave us a real low rate, so I guess, yes, let's do that. And they provide a flag and sweeper, uh, so their cost on that project was sixteen eight thirty. So we still, and keep a track of our time, that's the next item number two down there, trucks, there's three ten wheelers. We had seventy four hours to do it, and I used eighty bucks an hour, that's probably high, about close to seventy five, but. I'd rather be a little conservative, and the sweeper, we used our sweeper. Basins had their sweeper as well, so basically when they're doing this operation, it's two sweepers going out there. Uh, so our sweeper was eighteen eighty on the twenty three and a half hours, the labor. Uh, we assisted in the water, whatever we can do, it's system, helped in setting up signs, so that it kept their costs down. Forty nine hours of labor, forty five dollars an hour, that's twenty two hundred dollars. We had ten thousand into it, so if you had the ten thousand, whether it's sixteen eight thirty, that's twenty six eight thirty five, or eighty four cents a square yard.
Have you put these similar numbers into your proposed projects for twenty one?
No.
Could you?
Uh, there's, there's no, there's no milling in every twenty one, so it's not, it wouldn't help. Grizzle drive doesn't need, we can shim and chip seal that, so we don't, I could if there was some milling, yes, I would try to work with it. So, a recent contract, uh, dollar fifteen a square yard, and that was either inch, inch and a half, for thirty seven thousand square yards. So it's a, the dollar fifteen's a fair number. Uh, we were at eighty four, so the savings of nine thousand, nine sixty five, and the contract now by the square yard.
So we basically saved ten thousand dollars.
Right.
But you also paid all those guys, so if you were to add that up, what did you save?
No, that's in there.
It's all in there.
The ten, the labor, that's the labor.
Sir?
Forty nine hours of labor.
No, it's, yeah, and the trucking.
Yeah.
The trucking is also the labor.
So I didn't, I didn't break labor out, you have the truck rate, it's all the truck, uh, the eighty dollars an hour is with the truck and the guy driving it. Same thing with the sweeper, that's eighty with a, uh, guy driving and the truck, I'm getting in the sweeper, and the labor's forty, I used forty five. So it's got all the labor in there.
Yeah, so.
And equipment.
So in that instance, with that project, we saved ten thousand dollars by using our people to supplement. And that, that decision was made after the bid, right?
No, I made a.
Or was that before the bid, you structured it that way?
When I put the budget in last year, I used twenty thousand dollars for us to, Mike and I talked about it, I probably didn't give it in detail, so, but it was gonna be us working with basins.
Okay.
To, uh, get this done as cheap as we can.
So you had to allocate their time?
Right.
Okay.
I figured twenty thousand dollars, I'll do it, just on some numbers I had known, you know, working with them, and fortunately, you know, worked out to that fact. And it's new machine, I was a little bit worried about them with the grain machine, how they're gonna be, but, you know, they had Bob basin right on that machine, just pushing it. Those, and they're a pretty aggressive group.
So the twenty thousand dollars is what you, you need, the sixteen eight thirty is the.
Yeah, a little bit of savings there.
Yeah, that's what, whenever it says twenty thousand, it means twenty thousand paid out, as opposed to our own cost, right?
Right, I didn't, I didn't watch our own cost in there.
Yeah, okay.
And another similar example, uh, well, we'll talk about it next week, but. You know, we, we completed all the drain line cleaning over here four and a half days, so that'll be a little bit under. But same contractor that was doing that, and I'd worked with him before, and I.
Over here?
Yeah.
I thought I heard from today.
They were, they finished today, today was a good day.
Today was the half day.
Half day today. But same contractor.
Is it four and a half?
Four and a half, and we figured on five. Same, same vendor in a different town.
Would they leave the truck over there, cause it was there all week last?
Yeah, it was there, I think, they might have brought it home all the weekend. They did leave it in, uh, I think one garage, we left one up there, and the other, they left a garage, one of the trucks up there. Sewer line came clean contract, and the machine itself, I'm just talking about the tractor truck, is about eighteen hundred bucks per day, or a hundred eighty five dollars an hour, long day, you're talking about two thousand bucks.
Was it all gammed up today?
Oh, no, they, they had to get, just to someone, but I'm talking a different contract now, but what he had told me, excuse me, what he had told me?
Give me some water.
Okay.
Here, 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 you can use the, here. Thank you, we'll get you.
Don't worry about it. Broke my, my, she's gonna go dry.
He had a contract, it was, by the foot, they were going five thousand feet a day, so we're making over five thousand dollars, this is different town. Where, he had recommended before, do it by the, by the day. So some of these guys, they're busy enough, it's, you don't always get hurt by the hour. Cause lots of guys are busy, they need to finish their schedule, go somewhere else. You know, for example, we've hired in the past year, clean catch bases, you can do it by the catch base, and you can do it by the, by the hour. If you have a guy that goes around with him, popping the covers, working with him, you're right there with him, and he knows he needs to get him out of that catch base and go to the next one. So it's, it's, it's not always a bad thing, sometimes by the hour, you know, it's a good thing.
But let's, so let's talk about what happened, so how many yards did they pull out?
Probably twenty yards.
And it was big stuff, I mean, that truck was pretty impressive, I'm sure, uh, you guys know that truck, right? You guys at the end, um, I mean, the rocks are this big, they're huge, so.
Did the truck pull it out, or did men pull it out?
Oh, both, they had to enter that pipe a number of times, but the, the back to a truck itself, the tube, once I would suck them up, it would get stuck toward the top.
Yeah, toward the little.
Shut it down, just to someone get that out, so they were either busy helping or unclawing.
So was it more powerful than the other company that couldn't?
No, they didn't know, they had different awesome, and they didn't have guys that can go in the pipe, the other company.
But did they go in the pipe, or did they have a better truck?
No, they, they both.
Rather than cleaning the truck.
Truck was probably about the same. No, they had, the truck was probably about the same, but they had two guys that were confined space trained.
Part of your factors, confined spaces.
Yeah, confined space, so they went in the pipe that, when they needed to, and then, then other times they had to unjam that, the bend on top, get things working there.
They did go in the pipe?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So, that's why we needed that.
Are we, we gonna take, or consider any measures? So that, like, rocks like this don't get down further?
Yeah.
Actually, yeah, we'll be talking about that, we have the grand application.
Well, these might have gone in before that grate was put in too, right?
I don't know.
It's hard to.
Yeah, well, I understand that.
I guess my idea is I could prevent this from happening.
Yeah.
After we get some, some different measures, add them all, and replace the pipe.
Remember a few times in the early days, when I went up there, there used to be like a, uh, maybe with a three inch square grate that was there, that no longer was there, all of a sudden like disappeared.
That, he found it.
Found it?
Yeah, he started in the line, Mike always made that one.
Oh, my God.
Really?
So he wanted to keep that one.
Yeah.
It was, you know, about that big?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
So that's Mike's retirement present.
But he's not gonna get it for five more years.
Yeah.
I think that when, maybe it was Shane or maybe it was Chip and I went up there, the last one that happened, and, well, Chip was already up there, and I, and I got up there. And that was noticed something missing to me, and I said, hey, we got something missing here.
And down low?
Yeah, so, uh, we'll be talking about it next week, but I just wanna, you know, share the cost there on the milling, plus let you know that, and I got a text from him. So it's nine, the, the truck, what do you, eight inch drain line, the concrete is forty, ninety nine percent clean. So they, they got clean, the, the one, it's over two, I am kinda trying to do what I can there, like an hour, I don't spend a lot of time on it, cause we didn't discuss it that much. The twenty four inch over to the, uh, senior center, uh, that needs cleaning, that could wait until next year. So, and actually, probably just build it into the, uh, the grand project. So when you replace the, uh, the melt pipe, like cleaning line, I didn't. So when we replace the, uh, the melt pipe, like, clean line, I'd be able to clean that out as part of the grant.
So is it conceivable that water brings a lot of those down?
Right, I think what happens sometimes, but I haven't seen them cleaning it, but when, when, you got a lot of water comes down in it, some of the slots, the sides of banks, slough down.
Ah, the banks.
And the water pushes it, and plugs it up, which is, which is a good thing, it doesn't all go down through and plug all the pipe.
Yeah.
But I think if we had sort of a head wall type thing built there.
Yeah.
And maybe a couple, maybe a couple of small pipes that, that would eventually weep water through.
Right.
But something you could then clean out with, you know, right out, clean it out, it's pushing that stuff against the grate and down through the line.
Yeah.
And the line, you know, the other thing, the first section line, when it goes down through, it's, goes down through a stream, you know, just twenty feet from the head wall, drops down another five feet or so, so then you're like thirteen feet deep, and it goes down by the house, so there's no reason, that's the seventies method of putting in drain lines, I used to actually, Cherry Hill's a good example, you got one catch base on top, then this monstrosity of the drain line that goes uphill, steps, goes up to, there's three drain wells, but one catch base on top of that hill, which is, which is a lie, you would not do that these days.
And plus the permitting might be interesting too, if you were saying.
So, so what I would do is, that one is, is not put it as deep, but it's right down through, you know, having a five-foot sump right there, for the, for it gets contracted, does not want to dig that deep down along that property to replace that thirteen-foot drain line, still gotta get rid of it, and still gotta pack it, but you don't need something down in there.
Yeah.
So you could put a new pipe in there with a five-foot sump, so you'd have like a head wall catching the area in front of the grate, you know, like a bulkhead.
Right.
And then you'd have also a five-foot sump right there, so you got two places you can catch it, and something solid you can dig out of.
So, if we get another, another heavy raining situation, like happened that winter, will that alleviate any potential flooding that might occur, flooding that occurred?
If it floods up solid, I guess it would help, 'cause I think we have that, like a, like a three-foot head wall sitting in front of it, like a bulkhead. So a lot of the grit and stuff should stop there, and it should all flow in there and get in, so it would, I mean, by nature, it's, it's up to predict. I would say it'll help it, I can't say it's a hundred percent gonna stop it, I think there's other measures down the road, which I went up last year to, or, Army Corps of Engineers had a section of a modular. I think with the modular, I stopped up there and put this in, to recommend basis for some improvement in this area, if we didn't get it then, I think the stream itself, we can do some extra measures up through there.
But are, are we gonna have some grate in there in place in the very near future, preventing anything else from getting down through the, that other grate?
At this point, probably not, I spent that with you, really, I don't wanna, maybe unless we put a steel plate against it, maybe do something temporary, we might go do something like that, it's not gonna poke, jam anything up.
Yeah.
We can consider that.
I mean, I think we ought to take, and I think that's important up there, I mean, uh, the north end, I'm a little bit, I would say intimately familiar with it, but I mean...
Well, I, I, it's, we talked about repairing it up by the end of, uh,
Main Street.
Bramley Way, right, we're keeping, Bron, Bramley, what is it?
I, I know.
I don't know.
No, there's the one road, Andy lives on.
Brown Day Road, Brown.
Brown. So at the end of that, that's where the banks.
Yeah.
It's horrendous and getting worse and worse and worse, it's all that silk and rock, it's a, it's a sixty-foot.
Because I mean, you talked about...
It's coming way over here though.
You talked about...
That's high rock between the two, so, I don't know.
Because you talked about roof rapping at one point, but I think it's actually a staple on us to do that.
Well, you gotta care for that, 'cause that could all wash down on you too, and plug things up.
Yeah.
So you gotta care, man, what you do is, could be one of those issues where it's better off just waiting, but we'll take it, I think if we get anything, maybe play the steel, if that maybe, maybe if it's two feet high, do anything steel across there. As a temporary measure, let, let some debris hit it, without getting into the pipe.
Yeah.
But, uh, I'm not even loving it to it, I don't wanna mess up, I mean, the grate that's here is nicely, nice job that we're cropping in.
Yeah.
So, it's great, we've done like that for about forty years, so it's not a lot to do to now, and time we maybe try to something next year with the, what we're gonna talk about next week. We'll talk about a little bit more.
But cleaning out the pipe is gonna...
Oh, yeah, that's, that's huge.
We already did, so I think that is not gonna...
Well, one is trying to get it processed, prevent us from having to spend this type of money, cleaning it out again.
Oh, totally.
Oh, pipe, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
We wanna be able to clean it in front of the grate, and in that, that first stream, you know, talking about having a five-foot sump.
Right, but I mean, I don't wanna be able to have rocks like that going through there anywhere.
Yeah, and we don't either, and that's, and so, that's the plan, it's been many years since this has been made, right, how many?
Well, we, you asked me about the last, up here, and our video tape, so...
Right, but I mean, that's cut it, the last, what, ten years, twice, yeah, we're actually really good.
Yeah.
You know, you go back to when Tom Marino, I think Tom Marino was here in one, then Shane was here for one, and then Chip was here for one, with the, with the recent one, I believe.
So hopefully we don't each get a turn.
No, but if you know any of these dates exactly, if you have something at home on that, it would help, 'cause like, put the final application together, much like you put in there. But if you got any new stuff in it, that'd be awesome.
Let me check out, yeah, I know, on the check line.
We had the day of the last one.
Yeah, was that like the twenty-fifth of, uh, February?
Yeah.
Yeah, it should happen with the firehouse.
I looked up online, it was February two thousand sixteen, I wasn't here, but I know the whole state has major issues, but I'll, I'll double check with, uh...
I mean, I was just looking at, or Russell's writing, it must have been about, almost three feet of water.
Pretty bad front pan.
Wow. I looked out, I see this nice glare in there, I don't know, call something at night, I thought, maybe it was a little after one, I thought, nah, you know, it was asleep and raining, I thought, I looked out again, and damn, that's a skate, that's a lake.
Okay, so, um, I'm interrupting this discussion.
Well, whatever, I didn't want to jump in here, but...
You can, this, the R, R C M, that's, I forget the radiation.
Yeah, and if somebody, we can pass it around, if you guys want, need another copy of this.
I have one at home, I didn't do it up.
I've got it at home.
But, I mean, I think now, yeah, if we're taking into account the Burke Lake thing, if we can relook at this schedule, and then put in the, um,
Depot Street Bridge, yeah.
And then we might be able to hold back on that, I mean, I, I hate to push it off too much, that plan of the adding fifty each year, but we may have to, and then, because we did get a lot done this year that we weren't expecting to get done, um, this year.
Right.
Um, so, and then looking at how, how would that impact that plan, I mean, if there's roads that really aren't going to make it, I don't wanna mess with it, but if there's roads that we think, you know, we can hold off.
Right.
Um, it might be worth just relooking at that and seeing how, if we can cut that additional fifty this year, it would be helpful.
And so it would totally...
Yeah, it was without totally messing up roads that have to be addressed.
There's so many different ways to look at it, and like, you're trying to get caught back up, so if you cut fifty, then go add seventy-five next year, seventy-five the year after, try to get back on pace, but I look...
Evidently, just say the hundred and thirty, doesn't seem like it should be that difficult to rearrange your schedule and stay on your plan.
Right, it's just, this budget isn't even staying on plan.
Right.
The, our budget each year has an increasing, but, but, yes, it's...
Budget each year has an increase of fifty, right?
Yeah, but you also...
It's like two years ago?
That's also based on roads from that, that have a plan, that, of when their, their life really is over, so...
That plan right in front of you, right?
No, no, this one, the R, MS.
So, all, it doesn't...
You have to put the two together, I think.
Well, do we, do we, do we want me to throw an option out there, is look at the first phase of Pleasant Valley or reconstruction, 'cause that's, that is gonna be some major dollars, but I can...
I think, um, part of the, so we, we saved a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, but we saved it in FY...
Right.
Twenty twenty twenty.
Twenty twenty-six.
We didn't save it this year, I mean...
So, then you just, seems like you could move some things around to make a different schedule, so in fact, you did save one.
That's what we wanna do, yes, but this, this schedule down below is, I mean, the schedule above, and maybe I'm not reading this right, is your regular paving that's in that plan, right?
Yes, yeah, yeah, this little section up here.
So there, the one down below is the...
Right, so that's what's difficult, is the savings that's going down below, and for the next few years, we're protecting paving from schedule from here.
Right.
Okay, but, I guess I just didn't get very soon looking for them, do you wanna look at two options on value, whether the mill, shim, and lay chip seal, or one, one of that is being the first year of reconstruction? I guess that's...
I would...
Does it, go ahead.
It could cost you a hundred and some thousand to do fifty percent of it, that'll buy you ten to twelve years, right? That's what you just said.
Oh, oh, we're looking at seven hundred thousand dollars on Pleasant Valley, or a little bit more.
No, not, not sure, from the mill, cam.
Or lay chip seal, yeah, we're looking at probably seven, eight hundred thousand.
What did you just do up there?
Oh, we did, uh, mill and shim.
And chip, chip seal, right?
Did a, no, all we did was a mill and shim, that's all we did. Mill and overlay, however you wanna call it, just, mill in one inch.
And that'll get you ten to twelve years?
Not, no, that one, uh, if we did a mill, shim, overlay, chip seal, but that, that's eight hundred thousand dollars worth of work, that'll get you ten, twelve years, so we haven't done anything.
You did a mill and a one inch.
Right.
Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
And that'll get, how long without sealing it?
Year, a couple of years, maybe three.
Would you chip seal over that?
You're gonna see, you'll see cracks come through in the spring, on what we did, 'cause you only got one inch here, they will be there, knock it, stop it.
But it's still much better than it was.
Yeah, it, it was needed.
Yeah, but what you, it doesn't, I would look at, if we're looking at the longevity of things, that doesn't seem very cost effective.
Right, but it's more than a year of value.
Maybe two, three. Ideally, ideally, if you're nice, when we get to this, this, uh, twenty, twenty-three FY twenty-three budget, that we don't need to do anymore, we don't need to go backwards on that, that section to mill, we can maybe go the rest of it, shim it, overlay the whole thing, chip seal it, walk away, then we've saved every bit we just put into it. I can't, I don't have the crystal ball to know how it's gonna look in three years.
But you want to chip seal over the, you want to trouble it?
No.
No.
Oh, not.
'Cause you'd have to come back and shim that again, or, uh, mill it, if you...
I mean, I guess, yeah, you could chip seal it, so you don't get as many years out of it, but you could chip seal next year what we did.
Yeah.
So I think there's two things, there's the bit below, 'cause we've saved that money, this schedule to relook at that, and then, yeah, I think maybe Pleasant Valley splitting that up, and then the R C M...
R S M S.
Yes, R S M S, um, looking at how thrown off we are going to be if we cut that fifty. How does that really throw off that schedule that we have there?
Okay.
Twenty twenty-one schedule?
No, I mean, for the next five, ten years, that, that's a ten-year plan, so if you mess with this year, you're messing with next year, and here, and here, and here.
No, for two years, you're messing with it, because if you save the hundred and thirty in twenty twenty-three...
No, we didn't save the hundred and thirty from the top, we saved the hundred and thirty from the bottom, the capital improvement.
Right.
The top bit, where we're adding the forty, fifty to, is in there, the plan, the plan.
But if, okay.
Which is also this.
You do not have to spend a hundred and thirty of your top plan, aren't you in fact saving money?
Yes, but...
But the hundred and thirty was in the bottom plan, yeah.
Yeah.
But this is the top plan, right?
You're funding it from your top plan.
Right.
To pay your bottom plan.
We, yes, we could do that, but so, all we're saying is, we, we won't have, if we don't put the fifty in this year, it, because, if, the savings is coming from twenty twenty-six essentially. If we don't put the fifty thousand in this year to continue with this plan, it's going to delay something. And so we, we wanna look at the impact of delaying it, yes, we can move stuff around, because we saved a hundred and thirty thousand dollars in twenty twenty-six, and what is the impact of the delay?
And this is a separate total, sub-total to the capital.
But we'll get it.
If it was a project that was, had been scheduled for twenty twenty-one, this would be a non-issue, if we just saved a hundred and thirty thousand in twenty twenty-one, it would be ideal.
Yeah, and, and we also have to look at the debt schedule and, and how this is going to, we wanna get to that steady place.
Right, and I think this interest rate is kinda high too, the five percent, so, um, that can make a big difference if we just change that assumption, um, in the payment, yeah?
Yeah, and, they probably were conservative, well, no, they were conservative, but they're down there, they're out there putaways, you know, I think interest rates will be up there, eventually.
It's money side, borrow from ourselves, borrow less, I mean, it's, it's just a very big complicated picture that we need to...
Well, yeah, and we're making assumptions, because maybe, you know, in a perfect world, there's more transportation grants available, because the country is falling apart, and we gotta put more money, so we can't, we're doing the best we can to predict fifteen years down the line.
And we're twenty-one, twenty dollars a hole, so you probably not gonna see that money down the road, twenty-two, twenty-three.
But, anyway, if that, I mean, I hate to put us, I don't want to put us too far off that paving schedule, but at the same time...
Like you say, with seven and a half cents, or something, or something like that.
But there's also projects like Harley Hill, point zero six miles, why does that even need to be paved there?
So that, that's what town approved, so that's...
I understand that.
Oh, that section, well, could be looked at, maybe...
I mean, it's just, I know it's forty thousand dollars.
Yeah, I know, but, you know, Mike and I, right now, we didn't get into, when I did the R S M S, I didn't get into all those details.
Right.
Unless I knew it was a long section, room, upper metal floor might be one, that one, maybe we don't need, just chop that, call it up, paint gravel down the road, repaint it.
Yeah.
Harley Hill Road, yeah, you need a good apron there, maybe you don't need as long as that, but you wanna make sure all your gravel and grit is well away from that corner.
Put a ground in the road.
Yeah.
Compact, yeah.
So, but, yeah, so you're not talking basic dollars there, but that's a couple of years, but it could be looked at, maybe it doesn't need it. And then, well, you've been out there, maybe you know why it was like that in certain, how many years you've been there?
I don't know, probably go with it, it's not after, so, you know, I can, I know the lower half that we've done is better than the other side, but then, it sells out a lot better.
And, uh, let's go watch it, that might be why we don't need to repaint that now, you know, or maybe...
Because it's private, peace on top.
Which one?
This one, we're in Westerns.
Oh, probably.
Yeah.
Oh, I didn't know that. It's probably a town road all the way over.
Uh, it's private.
All right.
So you learned something.
So, I think that's one potential area.
Oh, definitely, yeah, yeah.
Okay, anybody got any else on this?
Um, not related to this, I don't wanna call them initially, but Shannon, I know it won't, you probably have another chance, but I think these solar things where we're getting credits and supposed to reduce, do we know if it is reducing our costs?
We do, and we have, um, data on it, so I don't think it was, um, what you all probably thought going into it, um, so, over twenty years, you'll save a hundred thousand dollars, and reviewing the electric bills, that's what it, um, we're on track to do that, but it was, it's not at all, I think, what was probably articulated to you.
Well, it's the savings, but, um, but we do get the rental, which is, I mean, not the rental, we get the, the tax.
The tax.
But is it?
And then, but, right now, street lights and things are that part, is that part of it, or?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
And I remember when we had this discussion with the person, um, I forget the company, but there wasn't a lot more that we could roll into that, if we, if another project came online, is that right, the town of Arkansas, or not?
Um, to, to do more with them, I, I would not recommend it, I think there are better options for...
Well, not necessarily with them, but another, another type of program like this where, in theory...
I would not recommend it, I would recommend maybe doing our own solar.
But in the contract...
We don't have contracts, we're not, you might have asked the same question, but I thought we were contracted out for most of our, our town electricity needs to this company for the next twenty years.
Um, yes, uh, but it does not reduce all of our electric bills to zero, we do have some electric bills that are at zero because of this, um, but if we were gonna do anything solar, and Wendy, you know, um, I would recommend doing, buying our own solar.
Yeah, we've talked about this.
Oh, we can with this contract, or we could?
I believe we, we, correct from wrong, but I believe we gave up certain, um, I don't wanna call it, but I think probably we gave up certain rights.
Wendy and I did not sign those contracts, we would be going to, um, yeah, that's set up a fighting...
Yeah, that's a lot to give away.
Yeah.
For, yeah, twenty years that of our electric needs.
And it's not a lot of savings at all.
Yeah.
And it's actually administratively to make here.
Yes, and even if we couldn't use the credits ourselves, we could sell them, we could donate them. I mean, it's, it would be valuable to have that ability, I mean, we have two bits, I mean, that's, the permitting would be really easy.
I mean, we would love to be able to, like, help nonprofits to, and help pay their electric screen. Even if we have more.
Well, okay, let's back that up, not be rude, but how's, how's that help us, how's that help the taxpayer in Rockingham?
Well, if we do schools, we reduce the school taxes, but we can also sell credits.
Yeah. So we're working in the deal with the schools, because that's.
We're not even there yet.
Kind of what I'm saying, if we go there, the majority of the schools, people always say to me, how come you guys never have enough money? And I say, well, take a look at the school portion, or the education portion of your tax bill. What I don't wanna see is, I'm all, I'm all for helping everybody out, but I don't about subsidizing. I don't wanna help the schools out, the schools are gonna take the money and use it somewhere around.
Yeah, that was just a.
I, I know that, I'm just saying.
We're just saying if we had excess power, there are things that we could do, one of which is to probably sell it. I, I, we haven't gotten far enough to analyze it, we haven't even really started, except, because, and the first step would be to see if we have actually constrained ourselves, and if we have, then we're just gonna do a little bit.
A separate discussion, we could get in detail in some day.
Yes, so, so the preliminary thing is diving into, from my perspective, just financially, to make sure that we were at least getting, um, breaking even if we're making what we thought we were going to in savings. So that's why we started an initial analysis, because it, preliminarily, it didn't even look like we were gonna see the savings.
Yeah.
So I just wanted to make sure. Part of it is that it's seasonal, um, so we see more savings in the summer than in the winter, and when I got here, it was winter, so that was what the knee jerk reaction was, whoa, we're not even.
Yeah, well, and also because it does affect the budget, because if, if we are saving more, then our electricity bills across the budget may go down, then we're not.
You guys don't see the sewer, the way to build up there are, the building for sewers, the electricity is at zero.
Because they have a much higher energy.
It's from the buildings, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, but we see large cost reductions i- in the town buildings, this seasonal one, and two, then we get bills from the solar company.
Anybody else coming through?
So did, do you wanna talk about the sidewalks?
Yeah, one more time, could we just?
Because we had that comparison.
We're putting fifty in there, but we're not sure what we're doing. You said, up by seven eleven, and now, we're looking at houses.
There will be listed up in.
So might we be able, but, do you have all that span, or is that another option to, for savings, for this year?
Well, this plant, I want to eat, it's in the replace version, this example, I want.
Well, we did a lot, and then we reduced it again, and now we're going right back out, so maybe we could make a plan where we could just try to adapt your charter at a less expense. That's a, that's a big chunk of money right there.
Yeah. Now, that's why last year, where we had less expenses, having the crew do it, which, you know, then we're able to do more, you know, we're able to do, uh, we do that for fifteen hundred dollars per hundred feet, and if we're talking here, probably we might get four hundred feet, it might be a hundred dollars. Yeah. Let's see.
Yeah, I don't.
No, we, quite a bit more, you're gonna be.
I'm interested in maintenance, keeping us in maintenance division. Not doing construction.
Yeah, well, I get it, these guys have.
All your balls and everything are gonna be shoved out.
Yep. Yeah. It's getting simple for regular living, they do a nice job, because that's all they do, unfortunately, there's still not a lot of guys here. You know, probably never be able to get that Tri-State curb up here for five hundred feet of sidewalk, you know. Mike Pilo, when I talk to him, he might be able to help us out, but it's not cheap either, he's, he's not, he's nowhere near the Tri-State curb price. So that's what we're looking at, you know, to do, to spend fifty thousand dollars, it might give you, if you want, you'll get probably eight hundred feet, okay? If it was without a curb, with a curb, you might get four hundred feet, give you a ballpark.
There's no curb on seven eleven, right?
No, there's no curb on that, so, but I know there's a lot more need than just seven eleven.
I know.
And more need than the canals. Well, yes, I mean, we can chop it, if we wanna just do those two, but, you know, I could take.
I'm not, I'm just looking at ways to reduce this budget right now. And options to do so. And still maintain what we have, you know, it's important we do that, but bring this tax rate down.
Because those two items basically are your increase in the highway.
You're paving in the sidewalks, yeah.
Yeah, so, I agree.
Those are important things too, so we can maybe just get it, get a, some figured out, how we can make it work.
And, and the other way you look at it, is you could do a combination, which I don't really wanna do that either, but you could say, we'll excavate, we'll put gravel, we'll have, so ready someone comes in and does the sidewalk. You know, Mike Pilo, for example, does not do the preparation, he does concrete, flatwork, that's it. S U R, they form it, they pour it, because they don't do, they don't, not S U R, but Tri-State, uh, concrete. They don't do the excavation preparation, so there might be a.
Oh, I think that's a good idea, to do the prep work, and have a guy come in flat leg, he'd, he'd come in on a Saturday for five hundred.
Right? And if we do five, get five hundred feet ready, then wait, now it's still, that's a half a day for them. Oh, no, that would, that's enough, that'd give you a couple of days for Tri-State. They do about two fifty, maybe three hundred a day. It's a curb, and that's what, that's what, if you put out curb, they do about eight, nine hundred thousand feet a day. So that might be a combination, so maybe chop some of that, still get quite a bit done, we'll do the prep work. The guys are pretty good at that, and that's, that's the meticulous stuff, you gotta, which takes some time, but, especially on, uh, William Street, it was just tight, you know, that's one of the tightest streets, you're right there on the edge.
Because of the amount of traffic there with seven eleven, is it, would, would it be better off if we didn't curb it there?
Down low asphalt nowadays.
Well, I know, I was gonna say, from a safety standpoint, you didn't wanna curb. That's why, that's what I was just wondering, would it be better off if we didn't, I mean, not, I'm not proposing to do it, I'm just saying, would we, would we be, would we be any better off if we did put, put in the curbing there and the sidewalk, or just the sidewalk and?
Yeah, right now, I think I just put sidewalk, raise it up, it's a higher, it's a wider, there's one section, we could put some curb in there with access. There was a, you know, so there's no curb in one section, that's the old.
Right.
Access to the house that was there that, that was planted.
Right.
Maybe just put it back in there, leave it, anytime you do any kind of curb, and you gotta look at both sides of the road. So we just, you don't always wanna go up six inches of curb, we go, and look at the other side, what the sidewalk is, you gotta kind of keep it together. So there are times, I've actually done a purpose, a three inch curb, because the other side is three inches, and you really gotta look at your overall, what's going on.
Well, the other side is quite high.
It's quite high, so, but.
And water, I don't even know, on the new asphalt, is it still making it to that drain?
Yeah.
Because the carrier, where the curb is missing, shoots out into the sidewalk into green space, and puddles air.
Yeah, right.
So a curb would.
Curb it all, but, at least in that missing section. And we'll, we'll take a look at the whole thing, we, we could put curb in. Curb itself, sixteen fifty of this, a linear foot, put it in, it's forty-five dollars, if you hire somebody to put it in, that's more.
It's granite, it's there now, right?
Right.
And you can't reuse it?
Uh, well, you know what, that might be concrete, I'm not sure.
It's concrete.
It might be concrete.
Is it?
Yeah, pretty sure it's concrete, walking down.
If it's granite, you can reuse it.
Yeah.
Concrete, you would.
Concrete, I think, that's why I think it's some, it's some concrete, I'm pretty sure it's concrete.
I think it is still. But we'll look at that, that's, we don't need a necessary budget, well, we could buy the curb in out of that sidewalk. You put thirty thousand, so we can cut it to, we can look at working it together, and doing what we can, if we do a hard work, and hire, hire our staff.
So, so we do wanna give you a menu of options, things you can cut, and you can.
Well, yeah, we can do that, we can do that, we'll just make them up ourselves.
Yeah, and we'll do that, one of the advantages of making the final decisions in January is that the listeners are gonna have a, um, estimate of the valuation, it increases or decreases, hopefully increases. Um, so we'll have, we'll have that information too, which will help.
When?
They're gonna do it at the beginning of January. So, so you guys don't need to finalize it until, um, the middle of January, the budget, so we have time. So we can look, we can get you more information on the stormwater utility, on the VIFT assessment, on o- other sources of revenue that are out there too.
So how much do you think we've been really, actually visualized from that stormwater, where do you, where do you think that's gonna get us, I mean?
Well, what we would, what, what we would start with is a feasibility study, and they're gonna grant money to, at the state, to do a feasibility study, I need to find out how much that is. Um, but what we do is segregate our stormwater costs, those costs are only gonna go up. And the state regulation is, is much, it's already a lot more than it was, and it's just gonna keep getting more intense. Um, so we would take out stormwater costs from the rest of the highway costs, um, include administrative costs, and then allocate those to the, uh, property owners, but it wouldn't just be taxable property, it would also be, um, non-taxable property. Um, and the, the biggie is the state, um, the state would pay for the impervious surface of the highway, of, of the interstate.
What's, what's their percentage of gonna do it, are they gonna do it on those, uh, yeah, we'll pay it, but we'll get like two percent?
Well, no, they, they, they already gave themselves a discount in the, in the law, which is, it's actually really good that they even acknowledge that they have to pay, because they do do some treatment, um, but they gave themselves a thirty-five percent discount. Colchester gets sixty thousand dollars a year from the state, from, from the interstate. Um, I don't know how much interstate is there versus here, um, but.
So they could take the stormwater costs directly out of the highway budget, from, you know, part of the manager, part of finance.
It'd be like a utility.
Yeah, like a utility, so stormwater would become a separate budget, and then we would be able to, so we would reduce the highway budget significantly. Um, and then people would pay based on a different system, not taxes, but based on.
An assessment, but more people would, there, there'd be a bigger group of payers.
To pay that.
Like the state, for example, is a big one, and then nonprofits, like.
Schools.
Schools, churches, um, would, would pay also, and with an assessment, there has to be a tie between the benefit that you get and the amount that you pay. So the benefit to commercial folks is that they would reduce what they pay by, um, implementing stormwater management, um, systems. And so they, they basically have a choice, and they can decide, reduce what, you know, put in a, a retention pond, put in, um, additional drainage.
Reduce the amount of concrete.
Yeah, which would reduce the amount of stormwater that we have to deal with, so there'd be benefits to the stormwater utility too, from having them put in those improvements. So, I mean, the state's really encouraging, um, towns to do it, there are five towns that have it, um, so far, they're all in the Northeast, but.
But if, if the state, well, I'd like to know a lot of pros and cons, I think, you know.
Totally.
You're, you're seeing, I think people are here saying income, 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 well, if the, if the school's gonna require more money, because they gotta pay this new fee, they're gonna, I'm gonna see my tax bill.
They're paying, they're, so.
Well, someone has to pay.
They're already paying the taxes for the stormwater to be taken care of, it's in the highway budget. So it's taking the same amount of money that we pay to do all of this work right now out of highway, and putting it in its own fund, and say, a different group of people are gonna pay, an additional group of people are gonna pay. So yes, the school will be one of them, however, the state would be the majority payer, and then, yes, the residents would be paying, but it would be, they would be getting their money's worth, instead of just paying a tax rate for it, they'd be paying based on the land that they have, that, that needs the work, and so, it's a better system, it's a fair system, no one's paying anymore. You're, the taxpayers are already paying for all of the stormwater work, it's in the highway budget.
Right, and the state would be the majority payer, but, but they would pay a lot.
Well, what I'd like to know, before we get into this, let's start, you know, I've already heard from taxpayers that were, that they're strapped, all right?
Sure.
And I realize that you're seeking out another remedy, but I'd like to have a somewhat solid preliminary estimate of what, you know, like this two percent that Peter's talking about, that the state's gonna pay on the pavement, or whatever, to, to figure, I mean, I'm hearing sixty thousand dollars in Colchester. Well, you know, Colchester, I think, if you look down on the map, it's a lot bigger town than Rockingham, and they probably got a lot more interstate running through it, so that, I'm sure they're gonna.
I'm just curious what your opposition would be, because we're just taking the money out of the highway budget, so that reduces your, um, tax base, right?
Right.
And then we're taking the same amount of money that's being done for the stormwater treatment, and we're spreading it over more people. So, no matter what, even if we don't wanna look at it as income, no matter what, from residents, it is reducing their taxes. They're not paying as much for the stormwater, because more people are paying for the treatment, the state, the schools, right now, they're not. So they would be paying a portion of this that's coming out of the highway budget.
Well, I'm not saying, I'm opposed to it, and I resent that term, what I'm saying is, we need to have more information, because, you know what? If the school needs to spend more money, I'm gonna see that on the school education side of my tax bill, and so is everybody else in Rockingham that's a taxpayer. And you can cloak it in whatever you wanna call it, a fee, or a utility fee, or another, you know, we're increasing the size of government, it costs money. And I'd like to know the implications, not only on myself as a taxpayer, but on the people that we have in this community, that are telling me that they're already paying enough in taxes, whether it's a water bill, or a sewer bill, or a property tax, or an education tax.
Yeah, we'll definitely get you more information, there, in the very back of the packet is a copy of the, of the material that B L C T sent out. I mean, you can, you know, feel free to share it with folks. Uh, and the first would be a feasibility study, to make sure that it makes sense for us.
But by the way, we can get, we can get a grant to start.
I, I, yeah, I hope so, that, I don't, this is another thing I was hoping I'd have all the information tonight, but I don't, but we'll, we'll get more information.
You know, we all, not to knock, not to knock the fire department, but I've heard a lot of no taxes recently, and, you know, we're gonna get a grant from fire departments, and guess what? We didn't get a grant from fire departments.
I know.
So right now, it's, it's part of our factor in this tax bill, it's adding up to the, what, seven and a half cents?
I know.
All right? So, you know, we all sound rosy, we say grant, 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 but you know what, I've said it before, grants aren't guaranteed.
Totally.
It sounds great for, like, the, uh, the news bike, the newspaper, when we say, we're gonna get a grant, but that's not reality.
I agree, we have to plan for not getting grants.
Right, but I don't like personally.
We have to plan to not, for the future, and not keep our money and paying tons of interest.
I mean, I'm.
Right, I mean, seventeen percent of our taxes are debt.
Yeah.
That is a huge, that's, because we're, we're trying to figure out why our rates are so high.
Well, we spend a lot of money out of here, I can start.
But, 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 but we're spending a lot to the bank, we're, we're paying the banks interest, that's, that's sad.
Yeah.
If we save it up, we can get interest while we're saving it, and then pay less.
From the bank and not paying.
Yeah, so, so that's, but it's gonna, we're, we're gonna have to concentrate and focus to get over that hump, it's, it's not an easy transition to make. It's like someone, it's like a person getting out of debt, you gotta, you gotta just focus and have a good plan.
People getting out of debt also don't continue to increase their spending.
Right, but now, a, a family service, then a municipality, because we gotta keep the economy going too.
In an affordable manner, we could, we could do that.
Totally, I agree, I agree. That's, it's always, it's a balance, because a lot of the services that we provide help the, help the residents, both individually and just as a group. I mean, the, the roadways are important, the bridges are important, like, the, the parking lot, one of the problems we have, we say, we know we have problems with parking, we just have problems with, um, parking lots being obvious and accessible, the bridge street parking lot could be a great resource, but.
Oh, they also don't enforce parking, so.
Well, we do.
They don't.
No, so, somebody enforced it on, on Saturday, it's a party, I'm gonna take it.
I get it, tell me, I get it.
I've watched the same people park in the same spots that I used to.
Some of those people just move their cars every time, and they're getting the system.
It's, they, they're scared.
Okay.
All right.
I think we have some plans.
Do you have something else?
No, I'm, I'm just saying, yeah.
All right, uh, other business, Ben?
No.
No.
Donna?
Is, is elevator okay?
Yeah, pretty sad, um, yeah, the, we're, we're looking at other vendors, actually.
And what about library?
Same difference.
Library is not A J compliant. You have to walk upstairs, or you have to walk downstairs into that building.
Right.
Because I think you said it was, I saw.
No, no, I was saying, this building is, someone said this building is not compliant. I didn't say the library was.
Okay.
But, um, but the library's having the same problem we are.
I spoke with Selena, and she said that they were having the same problem with Bay State, and they keep being told that they have the parts that they need, won't schedule the technician to come out, and so, I think they're, what I've been told from Bay State is they're short on technicians, so, but, I mean, they've had our part for...
So, you're calling a different company?
We are, but the problem is for this one, they have the part, yeah. But, 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 but for the future...
Make other calls, other companies will do it, somebody's gonna do it.
I have five, I have five other companies that Wendy was talking about.
Excellent.
Did they already put a part in, or they didn't fix it?
It didn't completely fix it, then it needed another part.
They wouldn't have known that this part was broken until they fixed the initial part that was broken, because...
I looked at something else.
Yeah.
We are?
No, yeah.
And then, um...
It's frustrating, they're...
So, that's the answer, they're not fixed, and we're now looking at other companies? Someone asked me?
I'm still calling Bay State and checking in, and checking in, and checking in for them to come out and fix it.
Yeah, I think they've got somebody right there in Charleston, I dropped by, and it was a case of the Van Nuys Park thing.
We keep seeing people, like, Wendy and Shannon saw somebody, like, literally two places down when we were waiting, and...
Trucks that were parked up in the bars. We were breaking, while we could not get technician here, and we had the elevator down. And I, believe me, it is not happy conversations with them.
Good, well, keep it up.
We do.
Whoever's ringing the phone.
And she will not return my phone calls.
And then the heat, at Waypoint?
Well, maybe we have to find out who the owner of Bay State is, and go direct.
It's fixed?
Yes.
Well, I've been calling, um, I've been calling the district managers.
Yeah.
I mean, the, the owner, whoever, whether it's privately owned or publicly...
We have gone all the way to the top.
They're gonna work on it. I just was wanting an update, and they, they said they're...
Well, I mean, it's, oh no, it's ridiculous, going on this long, the amount of money that...
But they're gonna work on it, they said.
This, the little one.
Different option.
Yeah.
So, we'll probably see an RFP for the elevator.
Yeah.
So?
Mm, all set.
Stefan?
Well, we have a couple items, I've noticed a couple of vehicles at times that are not electric vehicles, lugging in upstairs, or parking right. Okay?
Do you want me to let you know what's happening on that?
Yeah, sure.
Um, the ordinance goes into effect November thirtieth, the ordinance that got passed.
Okay.
So, we're having temporary signs put up, Rebecca's getting those together, that explain the ordinance, and will allow us to enforce it. And then we'll get the better metal signs put up later. Um, and it can be enforced by the constable, or the second constable.
Okay.
And that's the thirtieth.
Is that that it can be, or that it will be, because it's, it seems to be...
Well, we'll say will be.
It can be enforced right now until the thirtieth?
It's not, it's not in effect.
Ordinance is thirtieth?
Correct, the thirtieth. So, it's four days from now. Right, so it's...
And the second constable is apparently aware of the position, willing to do it?
I don't know, I don't know. Um, I will...
We need to look into that, too.
Oh, yeah, no, it's, yeah.
He was appointed. Well, we didn't, we didn't get anything back, they said he wouldn't wanna do it, so I've been out like, he's appointed, he should be contacted to first constable's body. That's my take on it.
And so, what would you have?
Anything else?
That's how it worked when I was there.
Well, okay.
But anyways, the other item is, um, got a complaint about plowing on Front Street, evidently there was a vehicle parked there. And it's my understanding that it prevented some of that street from being plowed. So, anyways, while I was made aware of it, I decided to take a ride that morning, because I was headed out anyways. And I noticed a vehicle on Russell Street that probably shouldn't have been there, and, um, during the storm, and then, the one on Front Street, I guess, my understanding, if you had to get a fire truck or ambulance through there, you probably wouldn't have been able to get a vehicle through there, because the way this vehicle was parked. So, maybe some attention towards that.
Yeah, and did you call it in?
No, I didn't call it in, because I was, I was advised after the fact, I took a ride up by there, to be honest with you, I had, I had squeezed through. Um, the other item is, I know, just mentioning it, because we've talked about the library budget. I think it was Woodstock or community to the north of us that had done it a few times, it was an article from the select board, as far as doing the budget, whether the, the select board does the budget, or a library board does the budget, just wanted to mention that. But, to think about any types of articles, whether that, or any other articles, because we discussed one here tonight, now's the time to think about it, because it's up to this board here to put it on for a vote, whether it be from town meeting, or however.
What did the article say?
Uh, well, I think it was, without going back into it, um, they had bored this town, where the library board already set the budget, then the voters voted to have the select board set the budget, but I don't, check it out, give you more specifics, or you can Google it.
Oh.
Do we have any idea when we are gonna set the library budget?
I have screening.
Is it the next meeting? I thought she wanted to be at a different meeting. Is it the next one, or the following one?
I thought she didn't wanna be at this one.
It could be, okay.
She, she'll be at the next one.
In my last, right now...
So, I'm not on the third, so, on the third, December third? Okay.
In my last item, before we head into the executive session, the R S M S page is scheduled, is that something that could be posted on the website, so people can see that?
Sure.
I don't remember getting a copy also, I'm gonna have to take a look at it.
You guys have a board gone, actually, last year, when Ben came on. But we can get you another copy, if you want.
Well, it'll be posted to the website, where it could be accessible.
Okay.
They might have put a claim card in there, but, because as budgets don't stay, things get wrong, so...
Right, right.
Right.
Well, they'll figure it out, it's June eight, June two thousand and eighteen.
Yeah.
It's a plan, but so far, we've been doing fairly well, so we're gonna stick to it.
I got one more thing, I guess, I gotta ask you. I had also, someone was mentioning to me about some pothole repairs at the town shed, you know, about that?
Oh, there, yeah, yeah, we patched the potholes up there.
How'd you do it? Or they were curious about the method that was being done, and...
I'm sure they just dumped them in there in a compact, but I wasn't there when they did it. There's so many, if you drive up there, there's so many holes up there. And we were gonna try to drag some of the boxes there, but the women didn't cooperate with us. Well, the last thing we're gonna try to do this year, but, so, they're bad enough, deep enough, so how they did exactly, no, I don't know, but...
Well, I heard how they did it, and the person was suggesting, maybe we did it, but some, a, a proper way. They felt like that's a waste of money, we have a new roller and a grader, and using shovel, within one ton of sidewalk roller, it's temporary, and then we'll go fix it again, right?
If that's, is that, what you see up there is a, it was a grindings that were put down, it's kinda scraped down there, put down a few, number of years ago, followed by a chip seal at the tool shed, and then those grindings are starting to, you know, they're breaking free, and no matter what you do, you, if you do that the right way, you waste a lot of time. And what they did, if they shoveled it in there, put it with a plate compactor?
Oh, I thought it was, um, more in the dirt garden.
No, no, dirt, no, this is the, as you're driving in.
Backside?
No, no, the front side. As you're driving in, you'll see a lot of fresh patches in there. And as bad as that is, you're not gonna wanna waste too much time putting, putting that in, cutting things out, because it's not gonna stay, it is, it is a bad thing. All that probably should be ripped up at some point, redone, but before you do that, it's gotta be lowered, because, because if you start overlaying too much in there, you're gonna raise a grade, drive it back, they're gonna lay it down.
What have we done with the, the potholes over there, when it was up there, like?
That's, that's what I'm talking about.
What I'm saying, in the dirt itself, I wouldn't say the potholes.
Oh, in the dirt?
Yeah, the skirts, actually.
I don't remember seeing many in the dirt, unless they're behind or around a building.
Because I mentioned it here about the springs.
They are. Behind the building? Yeah. So, if they're behind a building, you know, the guy, I would assume Mike would probably, if they're bad enough, you know, with a grader, grate them out.
I see, we've got weather stripping on the garage doors, finally.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're looking, I mean, those doors are...
Yeah, we're looking for replacement.
That'd be a good shape.
That's all, they need to be replaced. They're bad.
What do they put, propane generator up there?
Yeah, the generator's in, we're waiting for the tank right now, like, we're gonna have Bart put the tank in. And if I leave it in, it might get all wired right now, but it is a slab in the back, so if you drive it down to the tool shed, look behind the building, you know, behind the fire station, you'll see the generator right there. So, we poured the slab for it.
What was the propane decision, was that made, where was that made? To get a propane?
No, that was made last year, when you guys decided.
Well, we, when we voted on it, at the town meeting, it was voted, it didn't say specifically about propane or a fuel oil generator, but I think the thinking was that if we are able to get propane from Bart, Bart has a deal that if you get the propane from them, they don't have to rent the tank. So, the tank is free, and all the headaches that come with it.
Every company, yeah.
With the tank, no, they don't. Not everybody. You've got a tank from somebody else, like, they don't, they rented the tank.
Well, several other companies, if you fill up with their propane.
But anyway, I think that's the thing, and why it was propane. They could advertise it in the, in the shop, or I think I've seen ads in the shop, that they advertise it.
Yeah, it's a little more complex than that, because we don't, I talked about that, we're still, I'm still going to buy it, in the building. You don't burn enough propane to make it worth their while, so we're gonna be paying the installation cost. We're not buying the tank, but you're paying probably a little premium, more than a premium that you would normally, so. At some point down the road, we can buy the tank.
As much as you use it, you can walk across, get diesel from the pump, and put it in that way, too, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, anyways.
Yeah, but it is propane, it's waiting for the tank. When they determine where exactly they want it, we'll actually put some concrete blocks down, so it can sit on the concrete blocks. And, uh, it'll be in the same area.
And it's something, so it doesn't get hit.
Yeah, exactly.
Guys, there need for an executive session time?
We were not prepared, we were prepared for that, for the...
Next week.
For the next, for the meeting on Tuesday, and you have your books for Tuesday.
We were gonna discuss an insurance contract, but they haven't got the information ready, so we can't go on.
I mean, I...
Do we wanna just talk about it?
We can do a brief one now.
I can distribute the preliminary.
Yeah.
Okay, so we approach it to then, executive session.
Yes, and I'm, but I'm sorry, I don't have the...
I got it right here, I'm gonna, we need, we need both motions activated, we want to have contracts. You got yours handy, stop, or?
Uh, I got it.
I got it right here, right there. Okay, so...
Yeah, I get it.
You gotta put the two double on there.
I move to enter into an executive session, where to discuss a contract, or a premature general knowledge, for clearly placing municipalities' financial disadvantage, negotiating strategy, negotiating strategy and contract. We have a second?
Second.
Motion to make a second during the executive session to discuss contract matter. Premature knowledge, for instance, of a man's disadvantage for gratitude, uh, all those in favor would say aye?